Would you all please join me for the Budget Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right. So, our first order of business is going to be to remove and amend and approve our agenda. Does everybody have a copy of the agenda in front of them?
No.
I think you might have extra copies there, Paul. No? Want to share with me?
Sure.
So if you see anything-
So I would say strike the Rutland Regional-
My watch is tied down. I'm sorry.
Strike the Rutland Regional-
Oh, right, because they're not coming. Sure. That way if you want to- You know, he always takes his notes on his notebook, but I scribble all over them. Yes, so I would love to hear a motion to accept the agenda with that striking of the-
Revision.
So moved. I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Did you catch that, Chris? Thank you. I can't go on until- Well, actually, I could go on. So let's see, next I'm assuming is to look at our minutes to review and approve our minutes. And the minutes were of our- October 10th meeting, and they were our- It was our regular meeting of October 10th. Everybody's had a chance to review those minutes as posted, and thank you again, Chris, as always, for reviewing our minutes.
I make the motion to accept them.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Great. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? So we will sign those. So the next is to sign our grant agreement for the Rutland Regional Planning Commission. So we have talked about this ad nauseam. I don't know why we still haven't signed it. This is the grant that, you know, lays out our contract with the planning commission and what they do for us. And we've talked about it extensively, and I think we've even voted on it before. But we do need to sign it. So if everybody feels familiar enough with it to make a motion, that's great. And if not, I'd be happy to pass this around.
I so moved to sign it.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I should have asked if there was any discussion. Was there? Everybody's comfortable with that, right? Okay. So it looks like I need to sign, and Ed Boe will sign. And... The next- are you heading out, Doug?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Good night, Doug.
Good day, Doug.
So the next is the Road Commissioners' Report. Did you have anything you wanted to update us on? Yeah, that's you.
Well, winter got off to early start. And we didn't quite finish all of our projects, right, Charlie? We're a little bit behind and been out plowing and all the good stuff, so... It's about it.
So that, yes, do you want me to update you on that? For where-
I don't know. You have a hair call? I'm an argumental-
Yeah, I think I mentioned that EWP grant. FEMA or USDA, they've been fighting about who's going to be doing it.
Oh, okay.
On Little Village Road, just above or below Marrow, right?
Yes, okay. We talked about the subcontract and whatever, yeah.
So I did- So let's just make sure you and I- did you get ahold of Greg?
He's not returning my calls.
Okay. I forwarded the whole series of emails to Janice, so she has them as well. And it appears to me that from Greg and Kim and Michael- So Kim is with FEMA, Greg is with PhETRANS, and Michael is with USDA- That they are all in agreement that FEMA is not covering the bank stabilization portion of that project that USDA is. And in order to qualify for those grants, they were scrambling because there was some paperwork we had to get in really quickly, I think by December 1st or something. The paperwork was asking for things that were just processed, like our EIN number and our DUNES number and SAM number. Those are all federal numbers that you need to do grants. And so I got those from Doug, and we got those in. We also had to- when we had signed that grant, you might remember, we had written on a piece of paper, they were asking about what our procurement policies were going to be in terms of purchasing property for it. And we had written on- handwritten on it saying that all the work would be conducted in the town right away. They asked us to put that on letterhead, which we did, and I signed since we'd already written it, and we got that off. And then there was another form that was, again, administrative. It was just asking if our audit comply- if our bookkeeping system complies with this, this, and this so that we qualify for federal grants. And I talked with Justin, who is in, I think he might be Michael's- He's in with USDA, Michael, and he researched that for us. And we concluded that if our audit passes state audits, we're all fine with that. So we- and Janice helped me with that, filling out those questions too. So we answered those and signed that and got that off. So as far as I know, all the paperwork is in order for the EWP grant. And so that portion of the project on Little Village should be covered by USDA. And that's where it's left. But the last thing we wanted to check was we wanted to make sure- I asked Charlie, and he's trying to place a call to Greg, just to make absolutely certain that Greg- That nobody's talking across purposes, because we have so many people involved in this. So if you would please follow up on that, that would be good.
I heard you was on vacation.
Yeah. Okay. Well, I think that we- I think we have until, you know, at least like December 4th or something. But keep- yeah, keep on him, and let's be sure. But also, if you have a chance to ask Janice to pull up those emails that I sent her, you might read through those, and that might clarify it for you. Because I don't know what conversations you have with Greg. So... Anyway, it was one of those things where we just had to sort of untangle it, because who said what and when? But I think we're at the bottom of it. Yeah. Oh. So, that was the EWP. What else did you- Do you have anything else about our start to our winter weather?
Not really.
Okay.
Charlie?
Ben, you're off.
Lot of hours.
Lot of hours. This might be a good place to talk about the- what Stephanie talked to us about, which was that. And that way, we don't need to keep Charlie here all night either. So Stephanie Barok came, and she talked to us about our- Our stormwater- What is that called? It's the-
Denby Road.
It's the stormwater mitigation erosion thing. So as you read through that, Brad, you'll see that there is a schedule. So this is something that we've- we're required to bring our roads up to code. Actually, Steve, you explain this much better than I do. Would you please so kind just to explain that to Brad?
I already have.
Well, I think he needs to know about the segments and the dates and the, you know.
There's-
Fifteen percent.
Fifteen percent of the road segments, and each segment is 100 meters. Is that correct? 100 meters long that we have to bring up to standards by 20-
Twenty-two.
2022. We have to have 15% of the- them brought up to the standards. And...
So that'll follow this-
This all ties hand in hand with our road permit that we're required to have. And they've got it prioritized as to the ones that they want us to do first. Then after that, we can go down through and pick the ones-
So the road to be permitted is a new piece of legislation? Have we had a road permit before?
Yeah, I believe so. This is an updated version of it, Doug. This is a-
I believe this is the one we signed like three months back. We had signed one earlier in the year, which was their standard one. And then they brought out this new one that we're required to sign, which tied it into that document.
So these are-
So it's like the operating permit that we have.
It's like the operating permit. And we- so we are obligated to do these 15% by 2022. And then we're obligated to do more. And the next dates are, I think, 2025 and then 2036. So- and those will have more discretion, I guess, about when and what we do. Most of the projects that we'll be doing between now and 2022, not- I don't know most of them, but many of them, they'll be grant funding for. And will be, you know, applying. Charlie's already applied for them. And some of that 15%, we've actually already completed. And that will count, even though they came and they did the inventory on a certain date. And anything that we've done since then would count towards it, right?
Well, we may have already have- We may have already got up close to our-
I don't know. I don't know how far. I don't know-
Some of the stuff. We may, may have.
But this is what I'm a little bit frustrated with, and maybe my process is thinking is wrong. But this is where I'm thinking that this is the information that we need for our budget building that we're doing right now. Because we're working on our 2021 budget. We need to have 15% done by 2022. So we need to know which segments are we going to be doing in that time, and how much would they cost us? And I understand from Charlie that our hope is that we'll be doing the work. And so we've already got that built into the budget, and it will get grants to do the materials and other things. But if there's any additional costs that we think we need to add to our budget because of this, then we need to know that. What are your thoughts, Charlie? Do you think there's additional costs?
Depends on the grants.
So-
Me neither.
So somebody's got to stick a stake in the ground and say, "And we got to either put money in the budget or not." Do you know what I mean? I mean, we can equivocate all day, but-
Right. I mean, all those segments and the high risk or whatever it was, they got to be done by '25.
Yeah.
It's a lot of money.
So, and that, thinking of our budget meeting that we just did, that might be where our Structures Reserve Fund- That might be who of us to put a little bit more in the Structures Reserve Fund, because we're building up for when we have to do those things if we don't get the grants or whatever. And by the way, some of these are grants that we're not going to get as much- We're going to have more of a match that we're going to have to do, because we didn't pass the-
The Structures, if you use it on that, if we get a Structures grant, which I'm putting in for two, if you wish, or you put in, or that bridge on Lily Hill, Culver by Maryville. And that's big money. But you got 30 months to play with that, too.
Well, it's big money that is that our match that would be in our labor, or do we need money to match?
Those ain't labor. Those are out of our pocket.
Well, so I need- we need to know what that figure is and in what budget year it's going to hit. And I need to ask you to tell me that. I can't possibly have that information, Charlie.
At this point in time, Charlie can't possibly have it either, because we haven't started looking into this.
The Lily Hill was over- if I remember last year, I put in, it was over $200,000. And we'll try again this year.
So it was $200,000, and then our match would have been-
20%.
20%. We do- we already have a line in our budget, don't we, that's-
We were supposed to have a line in there for our match.
Yeah, I thought we did. That's what I wanted to take back.
Now that Doug has renamed half the stuff, it looks like we can find it.
I know. Well, so let's make a note to- we're going to have another budget meeting, and we'll figure out when that is. The match dollars for grants, where is that? And we'll have to look at that and see if we need to add to that. Okay. So Charlie, if you're thinking, so the year- so the budget year that we're working on is fiscal year 2021. So that's the year that starts July 1, 2020, and goes through whatever. So do you think we would do one or both of those projects in an ideal world?
It'd be probably one.
Okay. So then if we were looking for 20% of $200,000-
Forty thousand.
It'd be $40,000.
And which- which you got, I think it's 30 months, I think, on that one.
Right, so we might be able to put it into two budget years, is what you're saying. Okay, that's very helpful. And so we'll talk to Doug, we'll find out what's there now, and we'll figure that out at our next budget meeting. All right. Thank you, Charlie. I hope I won't have to ask you that again. Charlie, it was like we were dancing over that EWP thing. It was like, oh my gosh.
Yeah, but he's got his back to the camera, so.
Okay.
Well, the good news is, this is a 10-page report, and we only have a page and a half of it that has some bad news on everything that's-
Yeah, the bottom line of that report is that 81% of our roads do meet to code. Now, we don't want to rest on our oars, though, because we have to realize that at the same time we're bringing the others up, we have to maintain the ones that we have.
Exactly.
So.
But some of this is on such low-traveled roads that I really have a hard time.
And it can change or not once more.
Well, so one of the things-
Oh, yeah, we know that.
One of the things that came up is that- so you mentioned Brumley Road.
And we also know that Easy Street is a particularly hard road to maintain. We always get the bad washouts.
Right. There's a lot of water up on Easy Street. But thinking about a road like Brumley Road that serves one farm, it's currently Class 4, and what's happened, I think, and Steve, and Doug, you know, tell me if I'm wrong. But I think what's happened is that the new standards require us to bring Class 4 roads up to a certain level. And that might be a level of improvement on that road that's not really necessary.
Brumley Road is Class 3.
Is it Class 3?
It's a Class 3 road.
Okay.
If it was a Class 4, it wouldn't have to be brought up to full standards. But because it's a Class 3-
Okay, because it's Class 3. I've got it backwards. Okay. But we could- but if maintaining it as well as we have been is entirely serving the purposes, then maybe we want to reclassify the road. Is that an option?
I believe that's an option.
And so I don't, you know, we'd have to look into that and things. And there might be- I'm just using that one as an example, as there's places that- That because the new standards are saying you have to do this, this, and this. But if in fact, you know, it's working fine in that stretch of road, we could reclassify. And Stephanie did invite that when she met with us, right?
But if we can bring some of these roads up, it may save us from-
Damage in the future.
Damage in the future.
Absolutely. I agree. I absolutely agree. So I think we have to look at them on a case-by-case basis. Yeah.
And we need to seriously consider how we're going to maintain these ditches when we get them complete, because they are going to fall set of them.
Yeah. And, yeah, those rocks- We have those beautiful rocks on Gym Town Road now, but I, you know, I know they're going to fill with dirt.
40 yards below.
Yeah, I know.
And what happened with the beautiful rocks on Lily Hill Road by the driveway?
Also be removed.
Do we know if they were?
Last time I looked, I drove by it today, and I didn't pay no attention, but-
Covered in snow. No, he said he'd have it done in a couple of weeks.
Well, it's going to thaw here, I think, in the next- I think we're supposed to get some 40-degree weather coming up. Maybe take a drive up then and see. Um... So let's see, anything else for roads? Oh, um... The other thing that Stephanie talked to us about wasn't roads, it was the- Create a disaster mitigation plan. The new FEMA flood mitigation maps that they want us to have. If we have any input on, we've got to get that information back to her. So that's- Janice has them here, if you haven't had a chance to see them. So I guess these are new mapping of the flood areas, and it's going to affect insurance.
Well, that's what you're asking me about down here on Otter Creek Watershed.
Oh, is that part of the Otter Creek? Oh, perfect. Okay. I didn't realize that was one and the same. So that's even better. Do you want to- do you want to do that one now?
Before we finish up on what we've started?
Which was the-
Well, we started with Road Commissioners' Report, and then we moved right on to the Stormwater Management Plan.
Right. So the Stormwater Management Plan, she needs ways that we have-
Go back.
We have an email from her that says what we need to do. So here. She thanked us for our time last week to review the draft Road Stormwater Management Plan and Road Erosion Inventory Results as attached. As we discussed at the meeting, I'd like to receive any input on the plan inventory by the end of the month. So any things that we have that we want to change on that plan or inventory? If there's any things that we did, and I haven't heard those discussed. But if there are, she needs that by the end of the month. Any comments received will be incorporated into the final plan, which she'll submit to the town the first week of December. And then she'd like us to have the final Road Stormwater Management Plan adopted at our December meeting. So we don't need to vote on that until the December meeting. But if we want to make any changes to it, we have to do that now.
Well, this is the time that if we're going to consider changing the classifications on eight roads, we need to do it now and send it back to her to see if the state is going to accept it or not. Because if they're not going to accept it, we're still going to be-
Right. So do we have any other roads other than the one we discussed?
Pent Road.
Pent Road?
That's four.
Do you have your map?
It's in there, yeah.
What, North Hill Lane? Was that a yes? That is.
I don't know.
It's off Colvin Hill?
Yeah, backside.
Yeah, North Hill Lane.
Yeah. I thought that was-
So what we're looking for are the ones that are currently Class 4 that we might want to make. So what other Class 4s do we have, Charlie?
From the Spring down to Brumley Road.
Well, there's nothing on Pent Road that needs to be done. As far as- It has a center line, but it's not marked as does not meet or partially meets.
Right, it's not red.
And it's not hydroically connected, because it's only the sections that are hydroically connected, so-
Oh, okay.
It doesn't matter on-
So we don't- North Hill, which is North Hill, right, AKA Pent Road? So then that brings us to Brumley and the Spring going down. Are those on the hydraulically connected?
Yeah, I took this out last week when I looked at it.
Yeah. All right. What other Class 4s do we have?
Got that one at Green Farm. Cuts down over. That thing ought to be gone. I didn't realize that was a road till we had our meeting. Then, uh-
Brumley Road has a lot of sections, and then Easy Street-
Right.
Has a lot.
It's hard to imagine- It's hard for me to imagine that it would be in our interest to not do the work on Easy Street because of the water and the high traffic area.
Well, it's in our interest to do the work on all of the roads, because, as you said, Brumley Road supports two houses. And if we lose that road because we didn't fix it-
Yeah, we're going to have to-
It's a lot of money for two houses. It's going to be just like Parker Road.
Yeah. I agree.
So even if we are going to consider changing the classification, I think we do need to work at it. But that might change our timeframe on it.
Right. Do we know specifically what would need to be done on that road? Is that laid out in this?
Yeah, it has four categories there.
But we don't know where the segments are, because we don't have the GPS.
The GPS exact, yeah.
Because on Brumley Road, we have the Crown doesn't meet for one section, drainage doesn't meet on another section, and Culver doesn't meet. Partially meets for the Culver. Different section, drainage partially meets, and conveyance does not meet. And the third section, we have the Crown, drainage, and conveyance don't meet. And then you have to come down further on the list. And it's the Crown doesn't- Crown partially meets.
So when they say Crown partly, they mean the Crown and the road?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, so it's grading. Is that correct? So the big expense item of this would be material in Culvers.
It's going to be the material in the Culverts, because of the stone that we have to place in those ditches and the Culverts that we're going to have to resize.
That's right. We'd have to place stone in those ditches, just like we did on-
Every one of them.
Yeah.
Every one of these hydroically connected sections that's in red is going to have to be that way.
And I can certainly see how, if we don't do that, then the damage can come. So the only thing that would matter if we were to change its classification is it might change its timeframe as to when we chose to do it.
Right. At some point, we're still going to have to do the work, because if we don't, we're just risking losing it.
Mm-hmm. I'm inclined to leave it as it is. Don't put off till tomorrow what we can do today. I don't know. What do you all think? I mean, if we don't do it, we just make headaches for future select boards and future- I don't know.
Where do you get the money?
Yeah.
Well-
And some of these projects-
Some of these we could get grants for.
To get done, even if we get grants for them, we're going to have to consider subbing out.
Yeah, I agree. Well, this goes to trying to figure out how much of the 15% we've already got done, and how much is left to do. We really need that information, right? We really need to know exactly where- because if-
So the problem is going to be at this point in time, if we're going to find out exactly what we've got done, we're going to have to get Charlie the technology to be able to go and specifically pinpoint where each segment is and see which- what we've got done.
So we need a GPS.
Whatever it is that she said we needed. I don't remember.
Said there was something that they used on their computer to-
That, yeah. So I don't know.
Yeah, and she said she had to get us- she had to give us the waypoints. Without the waypoints, we wouldn't know.
Right. And there's a program, I thought, that she's supposed to be getting us, so we can access their program. But then he's going to need a way to get to the GPS coordinates. So that we're right.
Right. So I would think, though, that a handheld GPS would do it. They're pretty accurate to within a couple of feet now.
But why can't they just give us a report that says it's-
Well, they've got the map. You mean that gives the coordinates?
Yeah, and it shows the map of the road, and it says from here to there.
So as I understood it from her, that's what these maps are. But really, this is- this has to do with- so like if we started on- say that this is the road, if we started on the wall over there and we skipped this part, we wouldn't be in full compliance. And it's that exact, and the maps that she's got don't show it to- you can't pinpoint it. She said you need the waypoints, the GPS waypoints, in order to know where you have to start and where you've to end.
In other words, that point will tell you if you're that far away. Tell you within a foot.
Yeah, well, I understand that. But what I'm saying is, I think it's kind of unfair to tell a town that they have to do something without them coming and saying, "This is exactly what it is." I mean, they spent all the time doing this already, so they've got the information.
Well, it could be that if we were to say to them that, you know, take a look at the segments that we have and say, "We're interested in doing these three segments. Can you come out and show us exactly the starting and flag the starting and the end point?" They could do that.
That's what I'm- that's what I'm-
Is that what you're getting at? Yeah, I would think they could do that. I would think they could do that.
It just seems like it doesn't end. We've got people coming in and saying, "You got to fix this and fix that."
I know.
Put in an eyewash station, yada, 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 and come on.
So Brumley Road and the Spring to Brumley Road, do we have any interest in changing this? So the Spring to Brumley Road, that's really- that's the emergency exit from Easy Street, right? And access to the Spring.
And also, there's been an agreement, which I don't know how legal it is, between the landowner and previous select board.
Which landowner and what's the agreement?
There is.
Which landowner? Which landowner?
Richard Jotty.
Have you seen it? Or is this just...
We were told that it had to be, in order to leave it class four, we went into that, Charlie, remember? In order to leave it class four, we had to still make sure it was passable, but we didn't have to.
Maintain it.
But, but that...
I don't know how legal it was, but, yeah.
It was at least a gentleman's agreement that it would be maintained passable, but, but it's in our interest to make it passable because it is the emergency.
It is passable.
And there are also lots there that could be developed.
Didn't know that.
And heck, there was a tractor trailer on it a couple months ago, so...
These tractor trailers get themselves in the biggest pickles.
'Cause he followed his GPS?
All I ask is you don't make us follow.
So... But it would strike me that maybe the spring to Bromley, that, um, that maybe we could change it so that it would give us the luxury of the time if we needed it. And maybe we change that one and not change Bromley, um, would be a suggestion. And then the other one I think we have to talk about is that Green Farm Road, because that goes nowhere, right? Isn't that the road to nowhere? I mean, it's true growing up in that.
Somewhere, if somebody wants to build a house out there, we're gonna be stuck maintaining it. I mean, that thing ain't been maintained as many years I've been riding up over that hill.
It's the one right on the bend there that goes down.
Edred down Lily Hill.
Yeah. I...
I didn't realize it was a town road there the other night. I knew it was at one point, but not, it still is.
When we did nine one one or any of that, so I really...
Well, I've seen that happen in lawsuits, so, so it happened on the Four Corners Road.
You're right.
Coming to Colvin Hill.
What, the old stagecoach road? But that's thrown up.
When it comes right over through there, they were gonna build it, I had was gonna build, uh, had property up there.
Oh, when it comes on the Colvin Hill side, you mean? Yeah.
Yep.
Because it's thrown up on the Coburn side. That's got, no, that's been thrown up, it's got trail status or something, I think, but it's...
The other one was supposed to...
The whole thing was, because there was an old bridge in there that washed away a hundred years ago.
Landowner, tens of thousands of dollars to fight it. But this is what happens on these class four roads if you don't throw them up.
Right.
So...
But I think that, well, I don't know, I know that we had one at Smokey House, um, that was thrown, thrown up. It's the old, it's the old, the old, um... Yes, the road that goes through there, I've forgotten what we called it.
That came out to John Corey, right?
Exactly, and the reason that Smokey House threw it up, and they could, because they own both sides of the road. I, does...
Brittle Trail.
Yeah. So who, who, um, so the lands that we have in question, does it the same landowner own both sides of the road?
Richard owns up on the upper end and Bromley's on the lower end.
No, I'm talking about Green Hill Road.
Oh, Green Hill, I'm not sure.
Isn't that all the Greens?
I don't know, that's what I'm asking.
You'd have to go on tax map.
Yeah.
Which we don't want to get into tonight.
No, but we do need to research this and we need to let her know by, you know, the first part of December. Um, so, um, do you want to put our heads together? Do you want to make a little team to go take a look at Green Hill and try to scope that out? We'll figure out a time to do that.
Check it on the tax map.
Well, that's, yeah, we can do that.
We'll do that before we leave and then, yeah, okay. All right, so is there anything else we want to talk about that for tonight, or should we move on?
Well, I would say if you can put that, um, section from the spring to Bromley, what road to a class four, I don't see an objection to that.
I always thought it was class four.
Yeah, I know, I didn't...
Yeah, I thought it was too.
So, so we'll, we'll make that recommendation, we'll leave Bromley as a class three, and Green Farm we're researching.
Consider throwing it up.
Yeah. Okay. So next is, um... Let me just see. So we've already discussed the approval for the road stormwater management plan. Let's just do one other quick piece of business, or no, let's go on to, because Charlie's still here and we're gonna talk about the town garage, and you might want to be here for the char, yeah. So, so the town garage, um, let me find some information that I've got about that. So, um... After the last budget meeting, when it came, the topic came up about the garage and what to do with the garage, Brad and I got together and did a little bit of research on what some of the issues are. Charlie was there too, Charlie brought the ladder. And, um, we found that, um, one of the things that we found is what we believe is likely the same type of material that was insulation here, um, that is likely asbestos, um, and that's in the ceiling. We think that there might be a place or two where it's coming down the walls, um, so we think that's an issue that needs to be addressed, um, and we think that, um, there are, um, there's some leaks in the roof, um, and we subsequently found, yeah, and maybe a wall's like where that addition is, that that's what's leaking into your office area, Charlie. And then, um, and so there, there definitely are some things that could be...
I didn't get that.
Watch, Siri, just, Siri and I don't get along at all.
Turned you off and stopped talking?
Yeah, I didn't ask her for anything. She drives me nuts. But, so, um, but the bigger, I think the biggest question in front of us, and, um, and, and Bob Tobin's been doing a little bit of work just because he's interested in the whole idea of the garage and how things might get confused. But I think the biggest thing is that, just sort of like where we were when we were discussing this building for so long and the renovations, you know, we went around and around in circles of whether or not we added an addition or whether we built a different building or whether we did or this or that, and then finally, we decided that we're just gonna fix what we have here, and it's fixed and everything. So I think we're at the same decision-making point as to whether or not we want to pursue other alternatives to our garage or we want to leave our garage here and repair what's here and maybe take a look at traffic flow and some things and see if we can make some traffic flow improvements as well, including the paving that you had mentioned before. So, um, I think that's kind of the pivotal decision, is whether we, you know, say, "Yep, we're gonna work with what we've got here and fix it." Brad, you had had another idea, and if you wanted to share that with people?
I was approached by a landowner at Danby Four Corners who told me he has two lots for sale, and, um, they're right on the Danby Paul Road. And I still feel strongly that no matter what we do here, it's not gonna be a good traffic situation. There's not sufficient parking. We have issues constantly, the salt truck comes and everybody has to move their cars so he can back around, and there's no way that this is gonna be fixed.
Well, I think there are some options, but my own, I mean... We, we went to a survey with this office building, we asked questions, we did...
Well, we know, oh...
We know that, so, so I guess what I'm, I guess what I'm saying is that, you know, to buy property and to build a new garage, we're looking at probably four hundred to five hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah, we're talking roughly a half million dollars. So what I'm advocating is that we have a, um, a straw vote on the March meeting ballot asking the, uh, the voters how they feel about spending somewhere in the vicinity of a half million dollars to have a whole new town garage at a new location.
So, before we do that, um... Remember the survey that the planning commission did? I thought that that had an element in it that was also the garage. I thought we got that information already. Does anybody remember this?
No, I just thought about the town office.
I, I thought that at some point, there was a survey that...
A survey is a whole different thing than when you've got the captive audience on town meeting day and they're checking off boxes and voting.
So, that's a fine thing to do. In the meantime, one of the things that I think was really helpful here in this building was that we gave them the option of what it would cost to build somewhere else, but we also gave them the option of what it would cost to do, renovate what we had. Um, so there were choices. And so, um, I think what I would suggest is that we maybe, um, look for some likely volunteer who's really good at working with getting, uh, estimates and things, Brad, to maybe get some, um, estimates on what it would cost to do some, you know, repairs, to do the necessary repairs there and improvements, and then also to, um, to take a look at some of the possible reconfigurations for, um, the space. And there's, there's a couple things on space that I think are worth considering. Um, one is something we've long talked about, and, um, I don't know, did you have a chance to catch up with, okay?
Hunting season, I had to catch up, but I, I did leave him a message, told him what I was talking about, so...
So one thing is, is to once again, reach out to our neighboring town, Mount Tabor, and to see if we could combine resources in terms of a town dump. Because, um, there could be cost savings there that could be large for all of us. It could be that our dump would be open, you know, it could be available to all of us more days of the week for the same cost. Um, you know, there's a lot of options there if they were interested. And there is a new sheriff, not, I don't mean sheriff, but there's a, a new regime in, in Mount Tabor, and they may be more conducive to that, they might be willing to consider that now, but they didn't before.
They didn't want to do it before because the dumpster was free, because they got all the, all the log in.
The forest service, yeah.
Forest service, they, uh, paid for the dumpster fees, now they have to pay.
Right.
So now, we're looking at a whole...
Yeah, they may have a whole different incentive about whether or not to, to partner with us. And so I think that, that, and if our dumpster wasn't here, that would make a very large difference in terms of our space and, and use.
Is there power down there?
No.
Is there power down there?
Down, where there is, is, I don't know.
There is no power down there, and, you know, every time Danby gets into a situation with Mount Tabor, it always comes down to, Danby is paying at least three quarters of it, and Mount Tabor is paying less. I don't, um, you know, I'm not gonna get myself thinking it's gonna be a fifty-fifty deal because I know it's not going to be. And the other thing is, if we have the garage and the dumpster facilities in the center of town, it's more equitable.
It's not the center of town, geographically it is, center of town down here. We're gonna have to chalk everything to Four Corners, we're gonna have to have security up there because...
Oh, no, he's not talking about the garage, he's talking about the dumpster.
Oh, dumpster, okay, no, excuse me, I got off on track.
So, to me, that's more fair to the people that live on the west side. And I think population is balancing out that, you know, the population isn't all down here anymore.
Well, that's true, but I live practically on the west side, I mean, I'm, I'm way over there, and I've got to come down, whether it's here or it's five minutes further down the road, it doesn't matter, I'm still coming to the dump.
Right, but if it was two minutes from your house, you might like it better than if it's ten or fifteen.
Yeah, but I'm not gonna like it.
Well, you're not gonna like it, I'm probably not gonna like it, because sometimes I come down here three times on Saturday because it's so close.
So this gets at the other...
You know, that's us, that's not...
So this gets at the other thing that's on my mind. One is that, that in the past, people have shown they didn't have the stomach to spend a lot of money on a new thing and, on a new building, and, and we can take a vote to find out. But in the past, I felt like that's clearly what I had heard from our constituents, was that they didn't have the appetite for spending that kind of money. And the other thing is that wherever we move, the, whether it's the dumpster or the garage or whatever, you know, when something like that lands next to people who didn't have it before, that's gonna stir up a little bit of a hornet's nest and be controversial, somebody's not gonna like it.
Perhaps.
Whereas what we have here, it's been here, everybody's used to it, so I think it's worth looking at what we could do right here on our site that would make it more workable. And, um, Bob has done up a couple of, um, you know, ideas. Um, one of the things that, um, when he and I were talking about is that Charlie wants heat in the garage because to get the snow and the ice, you know, to melt off the trucks and to keep the trucks warm enough so that they start well and things like that. It makes a lot of sense if it could be heated. Now, we're not talking about heating the garage to seventy degrees, we're talking about heating it above freezing, you know? Right now, the heat source is a wood furnace, and the wood furnace is, um...
Not in compliance.
Questionable, yeah. So, but one of the things that, that could potentially be an option that I think is worth getting estimates for, um, also getting estimates for what it's gonna cost to repair the building, to do the mitigation for whatever's in that insulation, to re-insulate it, to seal it up. Um, the other thing would be that, um, you know, to couple that with the, um, heating and air conditioning system here, and to think about solar, we have a great solar site. If we had heat pumps in the, um, garage, it would keep the garage to temperature. It wouldn't, it would be an initial investment, but it wouldn't cost us, you know, on a monthly basis going forward. It would be a great boom to gift to the town going forward. And, um, and then we would also have all this area back here where we have piles of wood because we have to feed a wood furnace, that area could very easily be employee parking. And if employees were parking back here...
Because that's your whole leach field and your septic tank here, and I really don't think it's a good idea to be traveling over it and parking on it.
Charlie, you'd travel over it now, right, with big equipment?
And it's on a limited basis, it's not like you're doing it every day.
And we had the issue, three, four and five years ago, was it? That the tank froze up because they wanted it plowed off so they could park cars on it. So the septic tank froze up, had to be dug up in the wintertime.
Don't you have it plowed off anyway because of your wood pile?
No, we don't, we don't pull it up.
That's why the lock is there.
And I wouldn't want to completely walk away from wood because we're already cutting the wood, or we shouldn't be cutting the wood on road sides. It's either we're gonna burn it in the garage, or we're gonna have to find a way to get rid of it because we cannot have a stump dump anymore, it's illegal in the state of Vermont.
We can sell the wood.
Now you're gonna have to go to the landowners and get permission to sell their property.
We can also...
You have to have permission to take their property for the, here anyway.
We can also heat a new town garage either with wood or with waste oil. And we can have a new town garage where we have access from both sides so they can pull the trucks through. We're, you know, the old expression, "You can't make a silk purse out of a sow's ear," that's, that's what I'm hearing to fix up this building, because it's just, it's not gonna be right. And there's still gonna be a traffic problem.
Well, I still think that there are other possibilities of things we can do with the traffic. And it's worth considering because I don't think people are gonna say they want to put five hundred thousand dollars into a new town office. But it's fine to ask.
It doesn't hurt to ask, does it?
No, I agree, it doesn't hurt to ask, but in the meantime, do, but if we wait till March to ask that question, and then if they say, "No, fix what you've got," then, then, um, we, you know, I, I'm wondering if we can't at the same time go ahead with some of the estimates and get some of the cost estimates on what we could do to make repairs here, and...
Well, that's why we're putting in money into a, a building fund, just like we did with this building. We put in twenty-five thousand dollars a year.
Right, but I'm suggesting that we do get contractors in to take a look and get the estimates and find out what the work would actually be, so that we have some...
I understand that.
Yeah. Are you in agreement with that?
I mean, it doesn't hurt to ask, but I don't think March is that far away that, um, we can say, "Let's get some direction from the town, do they want to invest in a new facility?"
Well, I think it would be good to give, I mean, as long as...
You know, there's a lot of things I would like to see happen here, and the first one would be to get the roof fixed and get the asbestos remediated, and to get an overhead... and get the asbestos remediated, and to get an overhead garage door on that other bay, and to get this paved. So, we're talking a hundred and fifty thousand dollars right there from what I've already found out on estimates. And that's a lot of money to put into a building that you might vacate, and it's still really not going to be up to par, and that doesn't even include a furnace. That meets insurance things. And then we have a whole other deal here about insurance that I wanna talk about.
It's, it is a lot of money, but it's a lot less than five hundred thousand.
This is true.
Oh, and-
You were saying before about, you know, planning for the future.
I don't know if, I wanted to see if any of Bob's suggestions here didn't include that back area, which couldn't be plowed. Where exactly is the septic? Is it right up here or is it out that way?
The tank is out here.
Tank's right outside this window.
Right outside, and how far? And where does it go? So, we have a tank, and then is there a leach field?
And then the pipes go that way, and all behind the building here is the leach field.
So, is the leach field under the wood pile?
I don't think so. I don't-
That's probably the end of it.
Okay, so it's for-
But, you know, the wood pile doesn't take up a whole lot of space, really.
No, I know, but I'm just, I'm just sort of trying to get a sense of where the, because the tank itself, how large is the tank?
I presume it's a five hundred gallon tank. Thousand gallon tank.
I would think it'd be a thousand, but I don't know when it was put in.
It's not.
How long, do you remember when it was put in? So, it may be a five hundred.
It may be a five hundred, Matt.
Yeah. Yep, they did.
So, it may be a five hundred gallon tank, but more than likely, the leach field, when it comes out of here, is gonna start tight against this building and work its way out. That way, you're not encroaching too far on the neighbor's property.
Well, that's what I was wondering, whether the leach field, or whether there's a pipe that also, you know, has to make sure that it stays thawed between here and there. At what point does it start to hit a D-box and span out, or at what point? Do we know? We probably don't even know.
There are, there are problems on file.
There are. Well, so it sounds like, it sounds like then the only decision that we're making tonight is to put it up for a vote. And I would say that-
And, you know, not, not a big detail thing, we're not asking for a bond issue, we're just trying to get a general sense. Do you want to explore going forward?
So, we're gonna have to run any language for that? We're gonna have to be, you know, we have to be very careful on the language that's used. Do you want to try to draft something up and bring it to the next meeting, we can take a look at?
Yeah, if we're gonna put it on the ballot, I think we oughta have it on there if they want it in the Four Corners or someplace else, to at least give an idea of where the townspeople feel, rather than saying, well, people that aren't used to it are gonna be mad, because personally, I'd love to see it up in the Four Corners. It's a lot easier for us to truck sand up there during the summer and pile it.
Exactly.
And then come downhill sanding than it is to plow up.
And it's a lot easier to run an empty truck from the west side to the Four Corners than it is all the way over to here and spend, you know, at least a half hour when you're not really delivering services.
Disagree.
And I know Doug disagrees too. He's supposed to call him if this, but it's, we're not making a vote on any sort of issue, but I do know that Doug also disagrees.
Well, if they are deciding in Four Corners, I know it's just, you've gotta put the total cost up there. Can't just say, we're gonna put up a building, because it's not just gonna be a building up there. I mean, you've gotta basically, I hate to say it, a security fence around it. It's gotta be locked up, because look what they do down here, and this is locked up. We're right in the middle of the village. Up there, they're gonna ransack us. It's gonna be total, I mean, there's gonna be more than a half million dollars.
The only problem I have with putting the Four Corners on the ballot is that we, is that it just seems-
Then instead of saying the Four Corners, say the geographic center of the town.
It is geographic, but it's not population-wise.
Population doesn't really have to do with it.
It does, when you're waiting for a plow truck down here, when all your school buses are down here, and your schools down there.
That's still your, what we passed, your plan of what gets done first.
But it's coming from there first. It's not leaving from where everything is down there.
The school bus comes from the west side, just as much as it does-
The schools are down here, the people that are leaving for work, the majority of them are down here.
We've got a school bus that's parked on the west side that comes through the village.
We've got one school bus.
So, the only, my only thing about saying that it's-
One school bus had your kids on it, your grandkids on it, so-
One school bus coming from there.
To say one school bus isn't any better than one.
No, one's coming from there, the rest of them are all coming from down here.
Isn't there only two buses? How many buses?
The short buses included, we got three short buses.
There's a lot of buses in town.
Right, but you're talking about like the ones that-
Loretta, you got Loretta, you got Patty, you got her son, and then there's another high school bus, then you got Long Trail.
Right, but there's a lot of confusion. You're saying the school. The school carrier doesn't have high school buses and-
But they do pick them up. They do pick them up and drop them off down here, Burn Burton, Mill River, Long Trail.
But they're coming from all over town.
Mainly from this direction. They don't come over Danby Pollard and stuff, except for Loretta comes out of Little Village. That's my, that's my opinion. I, it's-
My only thing is that if we put on the ballot the Four Corners, then we can't get property there, or we can't find a location, or that location, it just seems, it seems premature to say something so exact.
Well, a couple of years ago, they're gonna give them the land.
It doesn't have to revolve around the village.
Why don't, why don't you draft up some language for us to consider for our next meeting? Because I think that what we have agreed, we discussed, you know, putting, I know, as a ballot issue, so. But I do think that if it's a ballot issue, we've gotta be able to put, you know, an estimate of what the price and the cost is. I mean, I, you know, whether you say they're doing the bond or whatever.
It's gotta be total cost, gotta be land, well, septic, building, security, which is gonna be way more than a half million dollars.
Salt shed?
Salt shed.
That's another problem, isn't the salt shed in violation?
No, we've been through that.
Not the way it is right now.
That's good now.
Yeah, no-
Blocks are in my wish.
The blocks have to be, but that's not, that's not a big deal. So-
There's nothing more with it being so close to the stream that I always heard about?
No, we've been back and forth with that, and that's, that's not, not an issue. So, um, so, okay, so we'll-
But there is a traffic problem, especially when you're driving down the bucket.
On dump day.
I've heard, heard that for years. It's a little bit like Baker Brook. It's an accident waiting to happen, right, but it hadn't happened yet. So, I just, I don't know.
I'm gonna tell you, it's an eye-waker, and we watch that bucket just drop.
I don't doubt it. I don't doubt it.
It's an eye-up there when you're backing out and somebody comes flying in. Okay.
All right, so-
Good on it. I wanna go on and talk for a minute about the insurance that we're carrying on these buildings.
Okay.
And see if we wanna update it. Right now, the transfer station is insured for eight thousand one hundred and twelve dollars. Keep it, change it.
So, does that include the dumpsters themselves?
No, because they're cassettes.
Right, but I mean the pad, the cement pad.
The pad and the electric and the building.
I mean, the building is not worth anything, and the pad, it's hard to imagine, you know, what's gonna destroy that sort of, sort of a bomb, so I would think it would be fine, yeah.
Uh, the diesel pump cover at four thousand four eighteen, so that's your tank and your electric. Can you replace it for four thousand?
With the tanks?
Well, it says diesel pump cover. Does that include the tanks?
Well, that's what they're talking about, yeah.
Well, our tanks aren't in compliance either.
They're both round?
Mm-hmm.
There's no containment system.
So, the challenge is that it might cost more to build what we would need to meet current standards, but for insurance, I don't think they'll insure it for more than what its replacement value would be. So, the question is, could you replace what's there for four thousand four hundred and eighteen dollars, or do you think we should insure it for a little more?
Should be able to replace that room for that.
All right.
The foreman's office.
Having recently taken a tour.
It's insured for seven thousand one hundred and twenty-two dollars.
Separately?
Just slightly more than the diesel fuel cover.
Wait a second, separately than the rest of the building that it's in?
Apparently.
Is that because of the equipment, the tools that are in there? All right, that makes sense. Do you think that, is the inventory, you think, have that value in there? Okay, then I, then I think it's-
Is it? Is that a good number, or should it go up?
I know lots of wrenches, they're big ones on the bottom, or big ones.
Oh, I know, tools are very expensive.
Do you think there's more not, Steve?
Would, could we ask maybe, Steve, would you and Charlie walk through there and guesstimate that for us, so we could update that?
Yeah.
Thank you. All right, what else?
We also, as you know, work with the fire department. So, the fire station on North Main Street, and this might better be directed to Ken, is three sixty-three, eight sixty-six. And then the one up at Four Corners is one sixty-five. And then the garage out here is insured for three hundred and fifty-four nine.
So, based on the estimates of what, not estimates, but based on the research that Bob did in terms of what the new garages, you know, were costing in, you know, other towns, I'd say that that's, you know, within an average, you know, range for just the, the building.
Okay. And then we have the town hall up at the Four Corners. That's very well insured. That's at four hundred and forty-three thousand dollars with contents of ten.
Well-
Can we burn it to get the insurance money? I didn't say that.
Uh, no, you didn't say that on camera. So, you know what, so this-
You wanna change it? We can change it down.
You know what I would suggest is, so the fellow from Passif agreed to walk through that, to talk about, you know, pot, potential, everything. Why don't we visit that with them too?
Well, and I mean, the listers have it assessed at less than a hundred thousand dollars, so I was-
That's good information.
Rather shocked to have a million for that building.
Yeah, we could pay for new car and garage.
Well, so the thing is, again, I guess it goes to whether or not it's replacement. I mean, so that building with that size hall, I know that when Timoth built theirs, it was well over a half a million dollars. So, I'm sure that's what they're going on. The question is whether we would replace it if anything happened to it, and whether we want, and I think that goes to the conversation with this guy from Passif. And I think it's worth taking a walk-through and considering possibilities before we totally decide not to. So, I would suggest that we leave where it is for right now, but that we have that meeting with him, you know, between now and January first, and that we revisit it then.
What's, what's his acronym?
His name is Wade. You mean where he's from? Passif. He's from Passif.
P?
P-A-C-I-F, yeah. I think that's what you're asking.
Yeah, that's what I'm asking. Okay, this building is insured for four thousand, four hundred and fifty-two thousand five fifty-six, which probably is right.
Well, so again, looking at the numbers that the planning commission and Bob came up when they were looking at if they were going to dispatch this building and build us a new one, I think it's-
And the salt shed is at eight thousand two hundred and twenty dollars.
That's probably right.
It's got no roof on it.
Got new roof on it, yeah? Enough or not enough?
Could you replace the salt shed for eight thousand dollars?
Yeah.
All right, then I'd say it's not.
Okay, so now you're aware of that.
All right.
You said, uh, up to the fire department, you said two sixty-three, and then you said Four Corners, four sixty-four.
There's another fire station up at Four Corners where they park a truck, and that is one hundred sixty-five thousand oh sixty-three.
That seems a little high to me. I mean, is there any water or anything in there?
I don't believe so.
Two trucks.
Yeah, but a two-truck garage, I mean, I just built a pole barn for eighteen, I mean. Yeah, is it heated?
Yeah, the water freezes.
There's, there's water in it, I didn't know that.
Well, the tank has-
The trucks.
And if the pump freezes, the truck is worthless.
Of course, thank you, gentlemen, of course. Yep, 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 yep. Well, then that makes, that makes sense.
All right.
Yeah. And there's nothing wrong with checking with Ken. I mean, Ken would be, you know?
Okay, so I'll check with Ken.
All right. You set, Brad, and move on? Okay, so we need to discuss and sign the errors and omissions certificates submitted by the listers. I'll have to find that. Errors and omissions. Board of Listers of Danby are hereby supplying the following changes to the grant list. Okay, so these are the errors and omissions, and the changes are, your autos, and it has to do with the value didn't transfer from two thousand eighteen to two thousand nineteen, a difference of a hundred and forty thousand five hundred dollars. Does this make sense to you as a lister?
Plus or minus?
Um, just says difference of one forty-five hundred. Change from four sixty-five to three twenty-four, so it's a minus. Value didn't transfer from two thousand eighteen to two thousand nineteen. I'm not sure what that means.
So, they must have given them a reassessment, but the computer didn't take it for some reason, and it printed out the wrong number.
All right. And then there's Christopher Hardaway, who didn't receive an adjustment letter. And then there's Robert Schuper, who value didn't transfer from, so the same thing. And so, it's three amounts for one forty-five hundred, fifty-two two hundred, and nineteen eight hundred. The listers have all signed it, so the question is whether we would sign also to accept that errors and emissions certificate. I have no reason not to, yeah.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And it looks like they want, there's room for, but I think we should all sign. Today's date is the-
July first.
Send it that way first, and then we'll send it this way. Brad, the Otter Creek watershed meeting.
Okay, so that was a bit of a surprise. I was kind of expecting one thing and found out that I was there for a totally different reason. What they are doing is they are updating the FEMA maps, the flood maps. And they wanted to know whether or not there have been changes, basically because of Irene, in the way the rivers flow. And I thought we were gonna be able to like get help fixing some of these problems, but uh-uh. The problems are not gonna be fixed, but the flood maps are gonna be changed to reflect- The problems are not gonna be fixed, but the flood maps are gonna be changed to reflect the problems. And unfortunately, the homeowners are going to suffer because of it.
Because their insurance rates will go up.
And, you know, we have a, a very sad condition. After Irene, all of the debris that came down from the Roaring Branch and from the Mill Brook kind of got deposited behind the Otter Creek campground. And, you know, you can walk across the Otter Creek there now. It's like ankle deep and...
I've driven across it with Steve.
In the summertime, and, uh, all these people in Mount Taber, all these people along Route Seven here in Danby are having water in their basements because the water table's just higher than it used to be. So, that's what that was all about, and, um, they, you know, they took testimony from us. I mean, it wasn't sworn testimony, but, um, you know, they were, wanted to know the facts. And they put out a survey, um, which I answered. And if anybody has any other input on the way the brooks are flowing, I think we have until the first week in December, and you've all had emails on that.
Right, and the maps and things. And she, she, she showed us the big map when we met with her, the meeting that you missed, but... Um, and so, um, so you tried to discuss with them, you know, the possibility of trying to do something to...
And the way it works is because our population is so low, we fall very low on the list because we're in the whole New England area. So, you know, unless you're Worcester, Massachusetts or something.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
It's not really gonna happen.
Is this something that...
And they, what would happen would be, a study would have to be undertaken by the Army Corps of Engineers. And, um, that costs a lot of money, and then their recommendations, and then who's gonna pay for the recommendations? The sad fact of the matter is...
Yeah, it's not there.
We're just a little fish in a big pond, or in a big ocean.
Um, so, these maps and these changes that are likely gonna affect property owners, we should let them know, and hopefully people be watching that they should come, they can access those maps here and see them?
When they're done. That's not gonna happen tomorrow.
Right.
This'll be like, two years down the road.
Yeah. I think the work in progress, though, can be accessed.
And it's being done by the Geological Survey, who's housed in Maine.
Oh. Okay. Alright.
Mr. Hardaway?
Yes.
Thank you for that update. Interesting. Alright. Um, our final order of business before other business is to appoint a coordinator for Greenup Day. And I did call Jesse and ask him if he would be willing. And he is. Thank you, Jesse. So, unless somebody, unless somebody has another person dying to coordinate our Greenup Day, I would love to hear a motion to appoint Jesse as our Greenup Day coordinator.
So moved, well, thanks.
Yeah. Okay, um, so, our coordinator name will be Jesse Piles. Mailing address, ooh, uh, Keeler Road.
Was that a second, was that you?
Yeah.
I'll have to get phone and email for them afterwards, same as last year, so it's easy. If I know changes type, same as last year, and the name of the town, well, I could've just said same as last year, yes.
Sure you don't want my glasses?
These glasses are terrible. If I wore them often, I'd get used to them, but then, but, yeah. Okay, great. Um, and yes, we do wanna thank Jesse. He does a good job every year, and we're very, very grateful that he's, um, um, willing to do that. And, uh, let's see. Anybody else have any other business, and then I just wanna look through my pile here and make sure I didn't have anything?
Um, we didn't get under the road commissioner's report the status of the traffic ordinance business, so...
That's, uh, pretty much, got, we only got a couple more, um... We gotta change the speed down through from Fishville down. Pretty much decided we're gonna do a yield sign on Baker Brook approaching Scottsville. Cause we had a cou- couple complaints on that, but that'll be soon as we can get something to, you know, uh... We didn't, we don't have a yield sign, so...
Well, we can't just change them unless we do the traffic.
Right, right, but that's just brought up, and we, Charlie and I discussed it, and we've told... Then we're basically the only changes and put the, um... I don't believe that was on that. I have to look again on that study. Remember, we did one on Baker Brook when they changed all the signs? I don't...
You don't remember Scottsville or Baker Brook, I don't remember any of them?
Yeah, we, we, well, Lynn and I went through that.
Yeah, that, that whole...
Right at that intersection where Scottsville comes off.
Mm-hmm.
Cause they had every other sign up there, the, uh, school bus stop, they had to change. Stop sign off the Tiff Road.
Have they actually done that work yet? Have they put those signs up? Remember, we had that whole plan that we reviewed with them. Did they actually do the signs?
I believe they did.
I have that plan somewhere, and I can, I can dig it up, yeah. I have a copy of it.
I don't remember, I remember something.
Yeah.
I don't remember.
I have a copy of it. I can dig it up and, and let you know.
They sent it to us to change it.
Yeah, and we drove it and marked it up and, yeah, and gave it back to them, yeah. I have, I have a copy of that. We'll, we'll look at it and, and see.
Where were you thinking the yield is coming out?
Right, as you're coming, just before you hit the, right where that V is, where Scottsville comes off, setting it just before where your, um, dry hydrant is.
So, Baker Brook would be yielding?
Yeah, just to kind of, oh, Scottsville's a through road there, really. And that might slow them down, cause that was a complaint that there was people just coming blasting through on that little short straightaway and not slowing down for the people coming off Scottsville.
Optimus Pond is a throughway too, and we've got them yielding.
Either way, as long as somebody takes something, yeah, somebody's gotta yield.
Somebody's gotta give.
Yeah. Probably not gonna stop them, but...
No.
They still blow through.
I thought in the plan that there was a yield sign there.
I, yeah, I, I thought there was too, uh, but I don't think it ever got put up.
Cause I, I thought, I thought in the, in the plan they sent us, there was a sign by...
We got, we got the one coming off from Timoth.
Well, I, I thought when you came down past Young Kent, there was supposed to be a sign that said, "Yield ahead", and then a yield sign.
I thought so too.
Yeah.
And then afterwards, I thought you and Lynn had took the yield ahead out.
Yeah.
And we're just gonna leave the yield sign.
Yeah, I thought so too.
Yeah.
I, I'll dig that up. I, I have a copy of that. I'll, I'll dig that up and see.
Well, right now, the traffic ordinance only has stop and yield signs on Main Street, Brook Road, Mount Taber Avenue, and Depot Street. And I know we have a lot more stop signs in town than that.
Right, that needs to all be updated.
Yeah.
Needs to all be updated. Are you all still adamant, some of you, about taking down some of these stop signs, like at the Four Corners? Cause I thought about that after our last meeting, and I just thought, it, 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 it makes work. I, I guess I'm frustrated by the fact that one select will put them up, another select takes them down, another puts them up and takes them down. And, and I guess what I was just thinking is that it, it, people aren't stopping there. For the most part, people roll through, but it does slow people down.
Well, that just opens the door for somebody to get a ticket, and, you know, it's just ridiculous, I think.
Well, I, I just think it's...
After you get a ticket for rolling through.
Except the...
That's your problem. That's the way I look at it.
Yeah, but to have a stop sign in a place where there's usually nothing to stop for is ridiculous.
Well, except that in that location, that I'm just, I feel strongly about it cause of the daycare and the kids. I just feel that that...
Well, the kids are in a fenced-in area behind the daycare.
Not, no, not all the time. I'm sorry, I drive it, you don't. I'm there all the time when I go by. Kids are coming and going because parents drop them off at different times. And children run, children get excited and run, and they don't always run in the direction the parent wants. It's, it's, i- if you had kids, you would feel the same. If you currently have children up there, you would, it really...
Yeah, they...
That, that location, I don't know what you do in the village, you know, I, you know, you know that better than I do, but up there, I do believe it's a safety issue. I really do. And I, and, you know, honestly, you know, we, we, this, we, we don't, we, we don't even need to write it into our ordinance. So, we can't even enforce it if we want to, but at least the signs are there that slow people down. And why take them down when they're doing their job? Why make work? You know, take them down and put something else? It just seems silly to me.
The mayor's car is, you're sixty, seventy miles an hour.
I know. My dog was killed there. Yeah.
That are not stopping for the sign?
No, they're, no, usually.
That, no, the, when, before those signs were there, that was, they, they were flying through there. It's a straightaway. I was flying through there. I know. It just, it makes a difference. And, and, you know, I, I mean, I roll through all the time. The sheriff's not there to stop you. They're not gonna be there to stop you, but at least it, i- i- If you're familiar with the area, it reminds you to slow down because there's kids, and it's whatever. If you're unfamiliar with the area, it lets you know there's an intersection coming up. I just...
Well, I'd like to see then maybe the one in front of Margaret Coburn's house put to a yield. So, when you're heading like, toward Timoth, right now we have three stop signs there.
Yeah.
So, I can agree that there is a stop sign.
But why change, that's what's happening now is people yield. They're not stopping, they're just yielding, and why change the sign? It just seems like they're busy.
Because then, they're not gonna get a ticket.
Well, if you don't stop, you deserve a ticket. I, I, I've totally, I've totally flip-flopped. I had these taken down the first time. When they put these up, you know what, Charlie? Bill Gormley did it. I screamed and hollered, and they were right there and took them down. And people in the village started complaining, especially, you know, Pam did, which I can see. People did fly through the village. They put them back up. Now, how many years later? Four, five, six years later, leave them there. Because they're there. People, not all the time slow down, but most of them do. If we don't have them there, they're gonna start, people are driving faster all the time. So, I, I just say, leave the stop signs there. If you get caught going through one, pay the fine.
But, we've talked with our sheriff. Our sheriff isn't stopping people who come virtually to a stop and then roll a little bit through. I realize that happened to you at one time, whatever, but they're not doing that now. But if somebody goes through at thirty miles an hour and doesn't stop, again, they're gonna get a ticket.
Completely different story.
Well, of course, but that's...
And it's a completely different story, cause there's not a store there now, and the petition from a hundred...
Yeah, but we got kids on the street now, which we didn't have for a few years. We got kids riding bicycles down here, which I haven't seen in years. And they're riding it out in the roads, and bringing that up. I had, I saw it personally, plus I had one other person called up in Fishville up here. There's a little girl, she's probably five, six years old, riding a little plastic three-wheeler in the middle of the road. And I got a call because the truck putting her hit her. I called the sheriff, didn't really hear nothing about it. They, it, whether they did or did not, check into it, but then I went up to, and she's out in the road. She's having a blast, cause she's got no driveway. And big smile on her face, she's probably six at the most, parents standing on the steps. And I had to stop. She got out of the road, and then she went right back in. I looked in the mirror. So, I called Dave Captain Fox, and I says, "We gotta at least talk to him." And he says, "Well, we'll talk to him, but it probably won't do any good." So, I mean, when we were kids, we were out in the road all the time. We used to come off Easy Street on sleds and bicycles, held the hoopin' down through there, but there weren't one car coming every twenty minutes. But now, it's a whole different ballgame. We got cars, trucks, everything, and the more stop... Yeah, the speeding signs don't do any good, but they're there. And the stop signs don't do any good, but they're there. So, if the sheriff's here and catches somebody speeding or going through a stop sign, well, pay the fine. That's, that's the way I look at it, cause safety, safety on anything is number one. I mean, uh, like I said, I was opposed to these stop signs, but now I just kinda got used to it, and probably I do roll, roll through them seventy-five percent of the time, but at least I can almost come to a complete stop. But, that's, safety, number one priority, so I say, leave them up.
Well, we'll have to decide before we write that ordinance, but the discussion's good to have, and maybe food for thought for, and we can talk about it again. I had a couple quick things, um, that, um, I had seen this ordinance enforcement training on December fourth, and Brad, you had talked about maybe doing it too?
Yeah, I'm, as you know, I'm available for anything for the next two weeks.
Okay. Um, and, um, I, um, have some medical testing that day, and so unfortunately, I'm not gonna be able to do it either.
Other thing on delinquent tax is that I was gonna go to on Tuesdays, and I've been moved to the ninth, so just, I'm wallowing through a whole family.
Well, we can, we can get the notes from it or something like that. I just, I just, I thought maybe if, since I couldn't go, that you could, but, you know, so... Um, I, so this thing about Ferguson and, and the dry hydrant, were you putting in a dry hydrant over on Parker today? Charlie?
What's that?
Were, were you working on a dry hydrant over on Parker Road today?
Yesterday.
Yesterday? Okay, and is that what this, I'm just wondering, I was just, so, this came in my mailbox, and it's from Ferguson Waterworks, and it's about a dry hydrant, and I was just thinking, is that...
We're working on it.
Okay. Alright.
Um, we're trying to, we just got approved from FEMA.
Okay.
To put that dry hydrant...
To replace, cause there was one there before the, yeah, okay, alright. So, that, um, and then, um... So, the other thing that came across was the design for the revi- the Parker Road Bridge project. Um, actually, this did not print out well on my printer, so I can't even really sort of see it. But, um, it's the letter that says, um, Charlie, you signed the letter saying that the town is writing for the revision? Cause remember, we had to revise because the money was too little. Can you just update it? Is everything going according to plan on that?
Yeah, we just gotta get the, we just gotta get the approval from FEMA to go forward. And you gotta make very happy, you know? Cause you've had a lazy people lot, but you gotta play by the rules.
Okay. Um, and that's the ordinance that I just had to keep. And then, um, oh, something that I forgot to bring up in our budget meeting, but I should bring up. Um, I was also charged with reaching out to Northshire Rescue Squad. Um, and I don't have new figures from them yet, but Jim Salzgiver, um, wrote me a note that said that, um... Well, it's, it's a long note, but if, essentially what it says is that, um, uh... So, we will need to be proposing a much larger increase in service fees for next year versus what it was agreed to last year. Um, he's trying to work that out now and to get fully discussed with his board, so he's gonna get us things, but there will be a, a more substantial increases in the Northshire Rescue Squad expenses. And it has to do with, um, um, uh, shoot, um... Smaller request, an increase of like a several factors, a potential substantial increase, so services can add as a request. So, one of the reasons the cost is going up, um, and it seems to be the major reason that's in, in here, is that the, um, they started losing personnel at the Rescue Squad. And when they did some research, they found out that they were woefully underpaying. And the only way to get and keep good personnel is to, they had to, they had to adjust their salaries. And so, that's gonna be reflected in our fees. And I don't think there's anything we can do. I mean, I, um, I was out at a call on my street, um, just two nights ago, um, and the Rescue Squad came, and I was awfully glad they were there. And, you know, um, you know, I, I, there's nobody I talk to in town who doesn't want to have those services, and they just cost a lot of money, so... Um, so we, we'll have to reflect that in the budget, but I don't know the exact amounts, um, and, uh... But he'll get it to us before, hopefully, our next meeting. And then, the other thing I wanted to just ask about, did somebody, did you all see the notice of, um, initial application for an Act two fifty along Old Otis Road? And I wondered if you might know something about this. It's from Green Mountain Power. Have they been talking about doing any right-of-way work or... Have they been talking about doing any right-of-way work or power work around, along the road?
Their, last they knew, they're planning on doing the whole state. They're trying to bring the lines out to the road so that they can do more work with trucks instead of paying people to climb.
It's the whole world.
I don't know, I, so there's a website you can go to.
They went out flagging every road in town that I've seen, because they've got them going right down the Timoth Road. They've got stakes in the ground and they're flagged to move the poles out.
Yeah.
They asked me about these issues.
Oh, they did that.
But, and maybe those have begun later.
Otis Road, remember, they had the, the flags in, that was back this fall, because you got in touch with me about it.
It says they're proposing to construct improvements for utility line projects along Old Otis Road in Dambie. Um, the project involves approximately eight thousand six hundred and thirty-one feet of improvements involving approximately five thousand eight hundred and eighty-five feet of work in a new corridor. New corridor, I just didn't.
So where are the poles now? They're not beside the road.
Well, I know there's some in our fields.
One goes right down through that property that we just, um, everybody's skipping, get ours all place, don't want to cut right down through to the craft farm.
And you've got one that goes from Jerome's over to Doug's.
Yeah.
To down through that swamp.
Yeah.
Maybe, that may be it. Well, the reason I brought it up, well, you can go online and Janice had sent us this and I can, I can go online and look more, I just, I thought maybe you would know since it's sort of in your backyard and you might want to find out. Never know.
They've sent flyers to, I thought, everybody in town requesting if you've got a well or a spring that's going to be in the right-of-way or close to the right-of-way for when they're setting their poles.
No, I didn't get anything, so, but it might be that they're not doing anything along my road, so, yeah, yeah.
My personal opinion, back, give them back.
Generate our own, enough. All right.
Put them under the crap.
I mean, once upon a time, we thought we needed telephone poles and now how many people have landlines?
I still do.
I do too, because, yeah, but still, most people don't, yeah. Okay, any other business to come before us?
Last time we talked about the Brock update.
Um, that's right, um, the Brock update. So what I know is that, that Tammy had asked Doug to update some figures and he, because that's, um, tax time and people are paying taxes, he was swamped. So I think we'll have to put it for the next time, but thank you for that reminder. That was good. Um, and I'll follow up to see, make sure that, you know, if they can do that before next time. And then I think that little committee was going to try to meet, um, maybe even before our next meeting. And so then we would hopefully have an update. Thank you for that. Anything else? Any public comment? Charlie? All right.
Anybody?
Thank you very much. I'm, take a motion.
I second it.
All right.